Oh, yeah.
So there was audio. Right?
Matt, this is Rick at the City of Palm Springs. Can you hear me? All right, so we're gonna go-
Yeah, that sounds good. I'm just gonna have you guys on mute, but I will be listening in.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Present.
Commissioner Hirschman?
Present.
Commissioner Song?
Present.
Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Here.
Four members present, we have a quorum.
May we have the staff report on the posting of the agenda?
Mr. Vice Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, December 5th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law. Mr. Vice Chair, while I have the microphone, because we have only four members of our Planning Commission due to the recent election of our other members, three votes will be necessary for an affirmative action of the Planning Commission today, so I just want you to be aware of that, that it will take three votes for an affirmative action based on the quorum of members.
Is that always the case?
No, only when we have a reduced quorum such as this.
Oh, three. Okay, got it.
Do the commissioners have any revisions to the agenda? No? With that, I move to accept the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, time for public comment. This time has been a side for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar, non-public hearing items, and items of general interest within the subject matter of the commission, subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. If you wish to speak on items two, I think there's two A, B, C, those are public hearing items. The non-public hearing items are under the consent calendar and three and four. So if you want to speak on any of those items, please come forward at this time. You'll have three minutes. And we are prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Is there anyone here who wants to comment on an item? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Lauren Austro. I'm here to speak on item 3A, the Living Out Project. This is a request on our behalf to increase the number of units in the building from 95 to 105. As we were going, and I wanted to explain to you why we've done that and how this came about. As we were going through the process, we started, we had originally asked the architect designer to create units that were very different from each other, so everybody would have a sense of individuality. We created 11 different units. As a result, in the interior of the building, it was very kind of like a jigsaw puzzle. And when we started working with D.W. Johnston, the contractor here in Palm Springs, they advised us at the cost of doing that, because there were no efficiencies of plumbing, no efficiencies of electrical, that it was going to be a very expensive project. So we took that opportunity to relook at doing the interior of the project, not really changing the exterior. And it was also an opportunity for us not only to increase the number of units, because it was great interest in the project, but also to reduce the homeowners association dues. Because this has so many amenities, as you can imagine, the homeowners association dues were looking like they could be quite large. And so with the additional 10 units, the cost was spread out over more units. We did this by changing the angles of the wings slightly, and that allowed us to get more space in the wings themselves. We reduced the square footage of the core, which had most of the common areas. We removed some of the conference rooms that we figured we didn't need. And that allowed us to get 105 units. And now we only have two versions. We have a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. They're quite large. The one-bedroom is a 1,300 square foot, and the two, yeah, they're big. And the two-bedroom is between 1,500 and 150, and the ones on the end are 1,650 square feet. So we've already been approved, I believe, for the project itself, but because of some city regulation, we had to come back to you for this one specific change. So that's what we're asking for today.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section. Okay, today on the consent calendar, we have the meeting minutes of, let's pull this out, September 11th and September 25th. Any comments or revisions to the minutes? Would someone like to make a motion to accept the calendar?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All vote?
Mr. Chair, just to affirm that voting on the consent calendar includes items 1B, 1C, and 1D in addition to the minutes.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any comments or thoughts about that? All right.
I'd like to hear a little bit about the Serena Project.
So you want to pull that?
So, yeah.
That's 1B?
Yeah.
All right. We will remove 1B. So we will be including 1A, 1C, and 1D in addition to the minutes. So let's vote. Let's do it verbally.
Well, it's going there.
Yeah, but Doug's has not come up. Let's do it verbally, starting with Commissioner Song.
Yes. I vote that we accept the consent calendar with the Serena Park being pulled out.
All right, Commissioner Hirschman?
Yes.
Donenfeld?
Yes.
And I say yes. All right. Now we're going to move to the public hearing portion of the agenda. Oh, that's right. Do we discuss Serena Park now or after the public hearing?
Yes, you would discuss it now, and Mr. Newell is here to make a presentation to you.
Okay, very good. So let's discuss 1B, the annual review of the Serena Park development agreement.
Chair Maruzzi and Planning Commissioners, in October of last year, the City Council approved amendments to the development agreement and established changes to that document which was originally approved the year prior. Some of the changes didn't really affect the overall contract, but it did impact the terms and conditions of some of the lending or the finance issues that the developer was experiencing with the project. So the project was, as I said, amended last year. Since that time, there has been, we've conducted our annual review, which is a requirement of the zoning code for development agreements. And you'll note, as outlined in your memorandum, there were four milestones that were expected to be accomplished within the past year. In November, they were to submit the final development agreement for execution. They were supposed to have financing secured for Phase 1. In March of 19, they were supposed to start their engineering document preparation in April of this year, and finally have an improvement plan approved and a recorded phase map. Of these items, there, three of the four have been completed, according to the developer. The fourth item in October, that was supposed to be completed by October of this year. The applicant has submitted documents and plan check for the city. And I would note, since this memorandum was written, that the developer has stated they have filed an application for the final phase, or for the final map for Phase 1. So they are getting closer to being an adherence to the development agreement. And staff will continue to work with them to ensure that the project continues to move forward. And again, we will continually monitor this development agreement for the next year and conduct another- Okay, sorry, my turned off. And we'll conduct another annual review in November of next year, as required by our code. So that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Hirschman?
So what was submitted to plan check? How many units and what's the status of that?
So they have filed a final development plan for the first phase, and that consists of 17 homes, adjacent perimeter landscape walls, adjacent perimeter walls and landscaping, both of the project entries, so the entry at Whitewater Club Drive, as well as the entry at San Rafael in Golden Sands, half of the public park, and finally reconfiguring Desert Sands to a public street.
And does the public park have to be constructed in any kind of sequence with the rest of the development?
It's supposed to be constructed in Phase 1.
100%, not half?
They should be constructed 100% in Phase 1.
And so what are they specifically behind in?
For this year, it's the recording of Phase 1 map and the final approval of the improvement plans for Phase 1. So, like I said, they've submitted the final development plan, so that will proceed once that gets through the Planning Commission. But that's basically going to be holding that up until we have that final approval.
And what's the penalty for not complying with the deadlines?
There's no penalty in terms of specific actions that would occur, like a revocation of the development agreement or anything like that. It just comes down to, have they provided substantial compliance? And based on the movement that we've seen from the applicant, we felt that they were close enough to substantial compliance at this time.
But there's no consequences for not?
The consequences would be scheduling this for a public hearing to consider modifying or revoking the agreement. But staff doesn't feel that that was adequate.
All right. So the consequences are, it could be subject to revocation?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff or comments? Someone like to make a motion?
I so move the adoption of the staff report and item 1B on the agenda.
Second? All right, please vote. It's not working, is it?
Mine's not working.
I think it is.
It is, but not on here.
Oh, yeah.
Let's do it verbally.
I'll do a voice call. Commissioner Donenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschman?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
And Chair Maruzzi?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
We can vote, but there's nothing-
Looks like we have some technical issues. We're gonna move forward nonetheless. To our first public hearing, agenda item 2A, request by Stephen on behalf of Reefer Madness LLC for a conditional use permit, application to operate a 1,153-square-foot cannabis manufacturing and cultivation facility within an existing building. Staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. So on June 4, 2019, the city issued a regulatory permit to Mr. Stephen Wiertek on behalf of Reefer Madness for a Type 6 cannabis facility operation. That operation does require a conditional use permit, and that's what we have before you this afternoon. So the conditional use permit is for the operation of a cannabis facility that will consist of manufacturing and cultivation. The size of the unit is 1,153 square foot, and the area view and vicinity of the location is right here on the screen. So that's where the unit is located. It is a building that was constructed in the 90s, and it has four units. Unit B that the applicant will contain, that applicant is proposing, is where the cannabis facility will be taking place. Now, so looking at the first page of the staff report, staff did indicate that, as one of the issues that the planning department identified, that although the location is appropriately zoned, so an M1 that allows cannabis facility, however, that building and its surrounding, mostly surrounded by retail storefront users. So, and as a matter of fact, the adjacent unit to that particular unit is a liquor store. So we saw that as a minor issue. However, in looking at the plans submitted, in particular, the odor control plan that the applicant has submitted, staff feels that it is adequate to address all the concerns and issues that we may have. So that's just the background of it. So now I will go over the exhibits that have been submitted. As I mentioned, this is the area view. It is now within the maratorium area. So here is the site plan. So what you see here, this is a unit, this is unit B. Unit A is a market that's mostly a liquor store. And the two other units are occupied by retail users. I think one of them is by mobile boost. The last unit is going to be occupied by the same applicant. However, that is not in operation yet. That would be a dispensary that does not require a conditional use permit. That unit is currently vacant. So what you have before you that requires a conditional use permit is unit B, where the manufacturing and cultivation activities will be taking place. So here are the pictures of the site. So the first one is again the building, a portion of the building. This is the unit in question. This is one of the retail units in that same center. Here is a picture of the building itself. Here is an additional picture of the building. These are all the front elevations of the building. Here is the rear elevation of the building where a door will be located. This door in particular goes into the building. As I mentioned, the size of this unit is 1,153 square foot, out of which 242 square foot will be dedicated to manufacturing, and cultivation will be 325 square foot. The rest of it will be dedicated to distribution and vegetable area that serves as an odor barrier. So as we go through the exhibits, I will speak more to that. And in fact, the applicant, who is a mechanical engineer, will be making the presentations, and he will be speaking more to you about the design. So here is the floor plan that was submitted. So I talked about the cultivation area. This is where the cultivation will be located, the cultivation area will be located, and the manufacturing and the processing will be taking place here. And it is noting that the process of manufacturing here will be nonvolatile. It would not involve any kind of chemical or hazardous solvent. The applicant is going to talk more about that. He's proposed using a mechanical press, very similar to a vice grip that you will see in an automotive repair shop. That's what's going to be used for extraction. He's going to be speaking more to that, and as I explained in part of the staff report. As I mentioned earlier, the location is appropriately zoned for this use. An odor control plan was submitted by the applicant, was reviewed by the city's consultant, and concluded that it is sufficient to contain odors based on the amount of cultivation activities at the sites. This is the plan of the odor control that was submitted by the applicant. So as you can see, this will involve a box-in-a-box type of construction. What you see here, this is where the activities will be taking place. Both, there will be new ceiling in a ceiling and walls in a wall designed to contain all the odors or activities to this section. The vegetable areas that will be serving as barriers are here, I'm sorry, and here. He's going to be speaking more to that. However, the odor consultant looked at it and felt that this is sufficient to contain any type of odors that could be generated in the facility. Staff was able to make the findings necessary in support of the CUP. However, as I mentioned earlier, the only issue that the department had is the location of the facility. Although it is appropriately zoned, however, the remainder of activities on this building are retail type that generates a lot of food traffic. So we conducted an environmental assessment of the proposal. It does qualify for a categorical exemption because of the size and because of the activities that will be taking place. Again, it is a Type 6 that does not require any type of hazardous or chemicals. It is- Again, it is a type 6 that does not require any type of hazardous or chemicals. It is, and as a result, we were able to make a determination that this would be unexempt. It is a public hearing. Notices were sent out to properties around, surrounding the area, and also to the neighborhood organization within half a mile of this location. We did receive several letters, those were distributed to you this afternoon. I just want to add that it was 100% in support of the CUP. You have those in front of you. In conclusion, again, because of the proposed installation of a new enclosure, which will serve as a box-in-a-box, that will consist of new walls and a new ceiling within the existing unit, and the vegetable area that will function as a clean air barrier between the manufacturing and cultivation areas, we were able to make a recommendation of approval for this project. That will conclude staff report. The applicant is in the audience to make additional presentation, and if you have any question, staff is available to answer those. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, because there has been a recent adoption of an ordinance, I'd like to speak to the planning commission briefly about the relationship of that ordinance relative to the review of this project. As you're aware, we have recently adopted by city council on December 4, new zoning regulations for cannabis uses. As part of the adoption of that ordinance, the city council specifically specified in the ordinance that applications that were in process, meaning those that have an administrative permit, and those that have filed a conditional use permit or administrative minor modification application, may proceed through the process under the existing zoning regulations. And so, the application that you have before you today is being considered under the existing zoning regulations that are in place. In your deliberations, you, as the planning commission, are reviewing a conditional use permit, and you are reviewing specifically the findings on pages 6 and 7 of your staff report relative to the proposed use. And so, please do not discuss the new regulations that become effective in January relative to this application, as they are not applicable to it based on the city council action. However, you do need to look at the specific findings for a conditional use permit, and you need to evaluate whether or not the proposed application meets those findings. Are there any questions in terms of how we apply that?
Oh, no, it's a question for staff.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's have some questions for staff. Mr. Donenfeld?
Edward, in the planning condition number 4 and 5 regarding air filtration and odor prevention, the staff report and the applicant's documentation extensively describes both how they're building a box within a box, and also what the technology is behind the air filtration, and specifically what the air filtration system is going to be.
Yes.
Why wouldn't those specifications be put into the planning conditions?
Okay. I can, we will go ahead and do that thing, and add those as additional conditions.
I think they should be.
Correct, yes.
It's very important what they're doing, and it's very special. So, I didn't see them any other place in the conditions, so I assume they were not there.
We'll go ahead and include those in the conditions.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Hirschman?
Is there a sign program for this building?
There is no, you know, I take that back. I need to go back and review files to make sure.
I noticed on the photographs, one of the retail units, I think it's the mobile, has a pretty large sign, I mean, relative to the fascia it's on. And then, none of the, do the other ones have signage? Does this market have signage?
No. So, well, the unit to the east alley section, this one right here.
Which one?
The one that is vacant does have a sign.
The vacant one has a sign?
Yeah, there is a signage there. Those are the only two units with signage.
Okay.
Yeah, but we will go back and review our files for sign program.
Okay. And maybe this is for the applicant, but what would the public see? Like, if I'm standing there and this thing is in operation, what would I see there?
At the same unit, at the proposed unit?
Yeah.
Most likely, you would not be able to see what goes on on the inside because of the box-in-a-box. That's what you will see if those covers are removed from the window.
What would I see if the covers were removed?
The wall, the...
So, there'll be a blank wall up against the clear lasing?
Correct. Yeah, and there will be the office there, right? So, there will be...
Hard work on display, 3D.
Yes. So, looking at the floor plan, just a quick second.
I was just talking to him.
Yeah, so it's right here. I'll pull that up. It's this wall that you will see.
And I'll ask the applicant, but in terms of the code or what you're asking us to approve here, is there any requirement or prohibition against the public using that front door there?
No, but the applicant is going to be submitting, as I mentioned in the staff report, he'll be required to submit an additional application for any type of improvement that will be made to the storefrontage. So, at that time, we'll evaluate.
But I mean, could he keep that locked? Would that be, or is the public invited in there? I don't understand what that front door would be used for.
Well, the front, yeah, it could be used by either the operators or, because it's going to be, this also includes distribution, so I would imagine that that could be used for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? I have a question about this box within a box. And do we have the consultant, the odor consultant, available to speak?
Let's see. Matt?
I'm here on the line.
Okay.
There you go. I'm glad you're here. The question I have is, based on the public's concern with odor in the past, and the nature of this cultivation producing odors, why is it that this technology is different such that you feel confident that it would not produce odors?
I wouldn't say the technology is different. I would say that the applicant is employing three different modes of filtration here, at three different levels. So, you're starting with the box within a box, so that initial volume of air is being diluted, free of odors, then discharged into another atmospheric space. The odor barrier goes around, and then that air is then further being recirculated and diluted, and that air is also being kept under negative pressure, which goes through a carbon filter prior to discharging to the atmosphere. So, the applicant is using multiple carbon filters and multiple stages of filtration as opposed to just relying upon one carbon filter to discharge to the atmosphere.
And how does this differ from others that you have examined for the city in terms of this technology?
Again, the technology doesn't differ. It's just the way that it's employed. And so, it differs by adding different, or adding multiple levels of dilution within the building prior to being discharged, in addition to having various pressurization or negative pressure areas to control exfiltration of nuisance odors out of the space.
So, you have complete confidence that this would contain the odors?
Yes. If I were to design a building, I would design it very similar to this.
Even though this is a retrofit building? So, if you're saying...
Correct, yes.
I see.
Yes. The box within a box has been a proven design.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions of our odor consultant, Mr. Hirschman? Well, he's online, so I want to see if there are any other questions for him. Will you stay online, or do we want to let him go?
I'll stay on the line. I'll be listening if any other further questions come up.
Okay, very good.
Can I ask a question of staff?
Yes, go ahead.
So, in terms of criteria we can use to apply to the project in terms of the conditional use permit, are we allowed to look at compatibility with adjacent uses even though this specific use may comply with the zoning?
Yes, you may look at compatibility of uses. That's one of the criterion that you have for a conditional use permit.
Okay, thank you.
So, I believe we should open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please come forward. You'll have, what's that? Oh, I'm sorry. We should have the applicant speak first, which actually apparently is you. So, why don't you go first?
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today to discuss my plans. My name is Stephen Viatic, and I own Reefer Madness. A few things that make Reefer Madness unique and different from other applicants before the planning commission and previous meetings. We are all organic, and we do not use any pesticides or chemicals. We are the, oh, thank you. The manufacturing method is a Rossin press, which you see to the right there. This device is small enough that you can carry it in one arm, as shown to the right. It is safe, simple, chemical-free. The press is actually in the audience, and we can look at that after. Or, here it is. We are a vertically integrated microbusiness. The products produced will be sold in our dispensary to customers needing quality, chemical-free cannabis products. Those products are cannabis flour and smokable cannabis wax. I am a mechanical engineer and experienced cultivator of cannabis under Arizona's Caregiver Program. If we move on to the next slide here. So, the dispensary, my dispensary is at the, let's see, that would be the east side of the property. You see it at the bottom of the page. The manufacturing is going to support the sales in this dispensary. If we look at the adjacent properties, there are, there's Boost Mobile, and there's Alkaline Water, and there's the liquor store, and then behind me is AJ's Market. I have met with those owners and discussed my plans, and they all support my business, and they submitted, they signed letters that I submitted, and they should be in the record. So, looking at my design from the inside out, it's a box within a box, as we stated, and the box is constructed of NPR panels, which are what are used in hospitals, semiconductor clean rooms, and kitchens. They're waterproof, airtight, and they're a cleanable material made of recycled plastic. Just outside the NPR sealed box is an odor-free air barrier. Odor-free air is achieved through carbon filtration. On the ends of the spacer, vestibules, which function as a triple barrier and airlock, preventing escape of air from the odor-free air barrier. The existing walls that separate the tenant units from one another, they reach all the way to the ceiling with no attic space or drop ceiling, which is ideal in this type of scenario. If we move on to the next slide here. So, there will be nine 12-inch diameter carbon filters attached to 1,700 CFM fans. Three function as scrubbed exhaust, while six of them recirculate filtered air. There is a negative pressure gradient through each area. There are, so this means that in the event of a crack in the wall or a door left open or something like that, the air is traveling from the outside in, so the odor cannot travel outside. This system is engineered with redundancy, so that if one component fails, another component is already doing the job adequately without help from the failed component. We call this a fail-safe design. So, for example, there are two filter fan units that exhaust fresh air to the outside in the odor-free air barrier. The filter fan units are large enough that if one fails, the other is powerful enough on its own to maintain a proper pressure differential by design. If we move on to the next slide here. So, we have exhibit B, so the east side cross-section view from Williams Road. You can see, again, the odor-free air barrier, which is designated in that light blue color. It surrounds the box and even the top of the box as well. So, the vestibules form a triple, and also on the end of vestibules, the vestibules form a triple, a triple layer of protection, of containment from the outside world. If we move on to the next slide. So, here we have the manufacturing process. So, the life cycle of a cannabis plant is 16 weeks. So, that's 112 days. Eight weeks are spent in the vegetative state of growing, and eight weeks are spent in the flowering state. Most cultivation facilities have large groups of plants that are all the same age. They harvest the large group of plants all at once, resulting in a burst of odor. That's not how my facility will operate. We will have about 56 to 112 plants at any given time in that small space. We will stagger the age of each plant by one day, which will allow us to harvest at most one plant each day. Harvesting one plant produces a very manageable amount of odor, which again is triple contained in our facility behind layers of walls and doors and filtration. So, now I'd like to talk about the manufacturing process, the extraction. So, the Rossin press, this right here, will sit on top of a toolbox, taking up no more than about 12 square feet in area. Material left behind from the process of, the processing of the cannabis flower, the buds that are sold in the dispensary, that leftover trim will be placed in cheesecloths and squished inside the Rossin press right here, and until a waxy honey-like residue excretes, and that's called Rossin. The Rossin is collected in airtight jars. If we move on to the next slide here. So, here we have the landscape and shading plan. So, while most of our improvements focus on the inside of the unit, we recognize that there are some very easy steps that we can take to improve the appearance of the site. We will add four trees to match the existing Tipuana tree, which is in the corner right. And we can increase the shading coverage, which by the city code and ordinance, we look at 15 years' growth, and that will match the city's parking and shading requirements is the objective. We also plan to put down some new gravel in places where there's some bare patches, and we plan on repairing some borders of those planners as well, where there, some of them are cracked and falling apart. We move on to the next slide. This is our parking lot, or I'm sorry, this is our lighting photometric drawing. So, I recognize again that there are some things that we can do to parking lot lighting to bring it in line with the city's standards, the current standards. We intend on replacing incandescent bulbs with LED lights along the awning portion of the building, and doing that can reduce the power consumption by about 50%, maybe even better. We also plan on adding light poles at the front planners. I'm sorry. So, we plan on adding light poles at the front planners, or what we might do is, I've been researching these solar-powered light fixtures, that they have a solar panel on top with a battery, and during the daytime, the solar panel charges the battery, and at night, the battery powers the light, and it makes it through the night, and they even work when there are some cloudy days. Also, lighting will be added to the rear of the building, fixed to the building itself. If we move on to the next slide here. So, the Bureau of Cannabis Control approved our state license for cultivation and manufacture on September 3. That's the email from that confirmation. We have met all the prerequisites, such as enrollment with the water boards, the California Water Board. Also, we've okayed it with the nearby tribe as required by the water board. We've done everything we can the right way, and I've gone, I've really tried to go above and beyond on my, on my design of the odor control plan to address concerns of the city. I've been renting the unit since January, and I selected the M1 zone as the place of my business, because it was and currently is the zone which allows all types of cannabis business and cultivation and manufacturing, or from cultivation and manufacturing to dispensary and lounge. My proposed manufacturing cultivation is tiny, 242 square feet for the manufacturer and 325 square feet for the cultivation. Size does matter. Smaller facilities produce less odor, and the odor is easier to contain and control in a small facility. Again, I'd like to reiterate, we are all organic. I'd also like to point out that in 2021, the state of California, we will begin a comparable to organic program, which is comparable to the national organic program, and we intend to be first in line to apply for that program, as we'll be all organic. Thank you for your time. I really hope you approve this project, and I'm available for any questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to have public comments, and then we'll bring you back if there are any questions from the commission. So, first, anyone who would like to come forward and speak, will have three minutes.
Ms. Sun?
Yes.
Good afternoon, commissioners and staff. Really appreciate the time, allow us to speak on Stephen's behalf. We've met Stephen about four years ago. My name's Ken Morehouse, this is my wife, Marcy.
Good afternoon.
We, we met Stephen through a friend about four years ago. My wife was sick with multiple autoimmune diseases, Hashimoto's, she had thyroid cancer, total thyroidectomy, and one of the challenges we ran into in the medical industry is the thyroid is very, doctors don't understand the, the technology, or the way that the thyroid works in the body. So we've, we've gone through a lot of struggles trying to get her back to a quality of life. And one of the things we ran into is all the pills. At one point she was on 33 pills a day to try to manage her symptomology and everything. When we met Stephen, one of the, one of the challenges, we moved her into the medical marijuana program through Arizona when it was approved, got her card, and the challenge was, there was a lot of times that I travel a lot for work. I work in cybersecurity, so I'm on the road a lot. And there's many times that she just wouldn't be able to get into a car and actually drive to the dispensary and pick up. So we needed a caregiver to be able to do this for her, to be able to even just go to the dispensary, pick up the products that she needed to be able to manage her symptoms. Unfortunately, I couldn't be that caregiver because of the nature of work I do, working with the government, working with federal agencies and even state and local government agencies, I'm not qualified to actually get that card without losing my, my ability to do my job. So looking around for caregivers, for me, it was a very high set of standards we needed to manage. I fired multiple doctors because they couldn't give the quality care that I was looking for for my wife. And when we met Stephen, we've met other people that were fully qualified, capable of doing the job, but Stephen's attention to detail and his professionalism is really what sold us on, the fact that this is somebody that I trusted with my wife's medical care. The fact that he was also a cultivator and looking at the product that he was, he was capable of producing, it was extreme purity, as well as the organic nature of the way he was growing. And that was entirely the lifestyle that we've actually started taking on for my wife, as far as food, medical care, as much as we can around holistic medicine. So organic and natural is extremely important to the, the products that my wife consumes, whether that's food, medication, et cetera. So we're, at this point, she's actually down to two, three pills a day.
Yes, me? I'm sorry.
Aside from a couple of supplements that she takes as far as vitamins and so forth. In addition, she uses medical marijuana exclusively for pain control, anxiety management, sleep, et cetera.
Everything that the pills were doing.
Yeah. And Stephen has been instrumental. If it weren't for him, there's been many times that I've been on the road for, you know, days on end, she's been out, very quick phone call, and he's, he's always there, available. And even at one point when I was out of work, he was, he just never failed to, to produce the need and the support that we needed for my wife.
And the biggest thing is the organic of it.
Yep.
I'm a person that medication and pills, uh-uh.
Thank you very much.
So we have also, there's an email in your, the records that you have that we've submitted on, on behalf of Stephen as well.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, feel free. Thank you.
My name's Jocelyn Kane and I represent the Coachella Valley Cannabis Alliance Network. I sent you guys a letter as well in support of this application. I just want to make a few points. As the director instructed, this is a, what we call a pipeline applicant. And the council was really clear that these should be considered based on the rules that exist right now, not what's coming. This is a one-owner business, which is very rare in the cannabis space. And his intention, obviously, aside from this organic and tiny cultivation and manufacturing, is also to hire local residents in Palm Springs. He's got two, right, or actually four, he's got a lounge, a dispensary, and a tiny cultivation and manufacturing business to support that retail business. And there will be obviously jobs, and jobs are really important to the valley, and so he is committed to hiring local. We are in a little bit of a struggle right now in terms of the cannabis industry and we're facing a tax hike at the state level. There's lots of hoops to jump through, as you know. So we are in total support of this application and hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Rick Pentel. I'm a licensed permitted operator for Northern Lights. You folks approved my permit two years ago. It's one of the largest in the city. This past week, I went and took a look at Stephen's operation on Ramon Road and the purpose of the meeting was to check out his odor control, see what was going on there. After a careful and extensive review, what I found was is, he's gone way above and beyond. You had asked the gentleman on the phone, what is the difference? And the difference wasn't that he used different things, he just did more of it. One of the plans, his plans are carefully thought out, especially when you think of the size of the building. The design of his structure, which is technical and professional, has been modified so that no odors will be emitted. Secondly, the room within the room concept, you just can't get any better than that. Its upgraded commercial carbon filters are the most important and an added advantage to ensure that there are no odors emitted. It's worth noting, Stephen began his process in February. His permit was approved in June and now we're here in December, hoping that, and knowing that he has done more than he needed to, to meet and exceed the requirements and standards by the Planning Commission and the City Council. To assure his operation will be compliant, Stephen has spent close to $10,000 in, in odor control equipment. For the size of his project, to spend that kind of money is overkill. So I want to make sure that people know that he has gone above that. So he can plan, I think the most important thing to know about Stephen is that he will run a professional operation, he will adhere to the city's rules and regulations. He will be a good neighbor. He went and spoke to all of his neighbors and got letters of reference from them. So as far as the fact that he is in that area there and we're concerned about what the neighbors think, I actually think he's going to be in addition to that mall, he's going to make it look nicer. The fact that there's a liquor store a few blocks or a few doors down means nothing. If you happen to know that area, it is going to be, it's a non-point. Having seen this through the review, I believe that, I, I would ask that the commission go ahead and approve his CUP. I have over 13 years of doing this here in the city of Palm Springs and I take this stuff very seriously and that's why I put on my nice clothes to come down here and see you today and miss the hearings on TV. I'll see you later. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience who would like to speak? All right, seeing none, you do have a two-minute rebuttal if you want. You want to use those two minutes?
So since I have two minutes, I just want to address a couple of things that I saw come up during the discussion. One of those was a question about a sign program. To my knowledge, there is no sign program. However, once we get the business up and operating, and we don't, we don't need a sign on the, on the business for a manufacturing and cultivation. However, the dispensary, eventually, we, we would like to have a sign on that dispensary. So we don't need the sign on the dispensary to begin operations, but in the future, we do hope to work with those, those neighboring tenants and help out with a, a sign program so everybody has a sign. The other thing that I jotted down, we asked, what will, what will we see at the front of that unit? And there'll be artwork displayed three feet behind the glass. We wanted to leave the glass so that it matches the other tenant units. And we're going to construct a wall that's approximately three feet behind that. There are certain building codes that we'll have to adhere to and that'll be a part of our building plans. But we want it, want it basically be where you can see just a, a wall and a hallway and there'll be some decorative, modern artwork on the wall. Maybe we'll have a pattern on the wall as well. And that's shown in one of the, one of the pages of your packet, I think it's page seven or page eight. It briefly came up on the, on Edward's slides. It's the, I think it's labeled the elevations. It's the one where you can see the, the building in all the colors, the existing colors. Let's see here, the other thing I jotted down is, oh, what, what would that part of the, what would that front area be used for? Why do we need doors there? We intend on going in and out through the back, as that's a larger vestibule. However, the front will be used for an emergency or if we're doing maintenance to that first vestibule, then we can, we can use the second one. That's it, but I'm available for questions if you have.
Why don't you remain there in case we have questions from the commission of the applicant? Yes, Mr. Hirschbain?
You addressed the walls of the box in the box, what about the ceiling?
The ceiling will be constructed of the same material, so it's going to be metal studs per the current building standards, the studs on the walls and also the ceiling. And those studs will be completely wrapped in the NPR panels, which is similar to reinforced fiber polyester panels.
And does the ceiling get penetrated for HVAC or lighting or electrical, anything?
It will be penetrated for the, the carbon air filters and there may be some additional cooling. There might be a split-unit AC to control the temperature of that environment in addition to the environment just outside.
Okay. At one time, we were told that a filter, and I might not get this wording right, but a precipitate, precipitate filter, one that, you know, water drips down over the air, is more effective than carbon. Have you, did you look at that type of filtration process?
I'm not sure of the process you're describing, but I am familiar with other processes. There are, there are processes where they spray things in the air, like cuprius iodine. And what that does is it attaches to the odor poli, odor molecule and effectively neutralizes it. Reason, I didn't want to get into cuprius iodine, is it does put iodine in the, in the air and I did my own calculation and if, if there was a lot of it and people were walking around with their mouths open, taking deep breaths, you would get a good dose of iodine that could be potentially similar to what you would be given as an iodine pill to protect your thyroid in the event of a nuclear disaster. And that's not something that you want to give yourself all the time in my.
This was, I, I think they use it in restaurants where, where water is, is dripped across the air that's blowing sideways.
I'm, I'm not familiar with one that uses water. Maybe our odor consultant, if he's still on the line, he might be familiar.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Sun?
So on, on this particular application, you're not going to have any need to put any signage program?
Correct. No need for a sign.
Okay. And what you mentioned is, in, in one of your building sections, you actually show the negative pressure mechanism, suction, exhaust, a device, and actually in the vestibule. So would I, if I'm parking on the parking lot, would I be able to see the mechanical unit off of the storefront?
You, you will not, because.
Is that behind the vestibule or is that in a sofa?
Most of them are behind the vestibule, but there is one in the vestibule to ensure that that air is constantly filtered so it's clean in case the door is opened. However, it will be pretty much blocked by a wall. So the, the front of that tenant unit, it's mostly glass, the door is glass, and then there's some windows next to the glass up until the corner of the building. Then there's approximately, I want to say about six feet of solid stucco.
Right.
So the position of the filter is going to be behind that, with the objective being that it's not visible through the glass. All we'll see is wall or artwork on the wall.
Okay. And, and, and once again, the reason why you didn't want to put the artwork directly on the backside of the glass is because you wanted to have a continuous sort of solemn look of the storefront.
Right. So artwork looks better, in my opinion, when it's, it's on a flat white background. And then you can also position some lights aimed on the artwork so that at nighttime it looks.
There's pros and cons, because by, by putting this artwork behind and if you don't keep the place clean, then it becomes a exposed storage space of commercial needs in which it becomes an eyesore. And the, the other idea is that if you do put it on the storefront glass, then there is no ambiguity of what's happening behind the storefront. You know what I'm saying?
Yes. If it's the direction of the commission to have artwork on the glass as opposed to the wall, I'm fine with that.
My, my whole sense of where the, where the staff was coming from is the actual location, that it seems to be a retail corner and you're introducing this use, which is very well in the zoning plan. But the idea that is, if this business helps the corner and helps your business as a micro-business as well, then why not make that into a discreet storefront? You know, rather than an abandoned void space. That's what I'm leaning to, is that it's discreet, but then there is really no way for anybody to know what's going on behind the storefront.
Certainly. So as a condition, we could, instead of having the glass, we could remove that glass and it would just be stucco, like the six-inch, or I'm sorry, six-foot section of wall that's existing next to the liquor store.
So the other question is, I, I know that in the future applications, you're going to be coming up with a retail part of this.
The retail is already approved. I submitted building plans, I forget the exact date, approximately two months ago, and those building plans were approved.
Oh, so the gray and yellow paint stripes were all approved as an architectural package?
So the, that, that's the existing color of the building. I'm not proposing any changes to the, to the painting of the building.
Are you saying that that corner, the visible corner, that it's also part of your business, has already been approved, design-wise and project-wise?
The, the dispensary and lounge, they don't require a conditional use permit.
Oh.
So all the applicant is doing there is a tenant improvement in that space. Now, under the new regulations, they would be required to go through architectural review regardless.
Right.
But those don't take effect yet.
Right. I, I'm just surprised because it's a pretty visible corner in which, you know, paint selection-wise has not been reviewed through staff.
Yeah. If they are keeping the existing paint that's on the building, then no approval would be necessary. If they do a building repaint, it could either be approved at a staff level or could be forwarded to the Architectural Advisory Committee.
Okay. But Flynn, even that existing scheme has not been reviewed. The previous applicant has never brought it as.
Yeah. It's been in place for quite some time.
Correct.
So I couldn't tell you when it was done or if there was any type of notice of violation or anything like that associated with it. We don't have a record of that, unfortunately. But again, if we could confine our comments to the tenant space at hand.
Sure. As far as the, the site lighting goes, you have the typical sort of stadium parking shoebox like fixture and not something that, you know, it's a small corner neighborhood, commercial area. And so are you open to bringing more stylistic light pole design to this?
Sure. Yeah, we can. I have seen lights that go on the palm trees and we have, I think, four or five palm trees in the front of that site. And I've seen downtown where there are these light fixtures that kind of aim up at the top of the palm tree to light it up and make it attractive at night. I would be open to that sort of thing. It would have to meet all the building requirements and I, I believe light fixtures are supposed to be, or at least light fixtures of a certain caliber are supposed to be full cut off.
Full cut off.
And I am right underneath the, the airport's landing path, so.
Right.
It's important that we don't shine too much to the sky because that might affect their, their landing.
And you're not proposing any more additional lighting off of the underside of the roof overhang whatsoever to your manufacturing, to this application?
Sort of. So the, the awning, that overhang that we're referring to, there are existing fixtures in there that are, they're, they're either halogen or they're incandescent, which are not as good as LED.
Right.
So we're proposing to just go through and replace all those bulbs with a LED equivalent.
Or consistent lighting.
Consistent lighting and energy savings as well, being green.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, why don't you just sit there and we'll just have some discussion. Ms. Donacal.
I have to compliment the applicant on the thoroughness with respect to the technology. I wish, I know you've got a small space, so it's probably economic, more economical to do it in a small cultivation area than one of these larger areas. But I, I like the box within the box, of course, and I think you've gone the extra mile to have redundancy in the, the air filter systems. It's an unusual place to have a cultivation operation, but I think you've done it well and I would support this application. With respect to the art, I really have to defer to our aesthetics expert here, but sometimes when you do it on the glass, it, over time, gets, oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, I thought I had it off. I'm sorry. Sometimes it, it, it. Sometimes it, it deteriorates more quickly because of the, the sun and the elements out here. I sort of like the idea of having it set back, particularly if you can light it in a sort of interesting way. But that's, I don't really care one way or the other. It's sort of up to you, and if Ms. Song feels strongly about that, I would support her in that. But I do support your project.
Mr. Hirschbain?
I, I too applaud the level of detail you've applied to this. Unfortunately, from an adjacency standpoint, I, I think it really does a detriment to the retail or commercial nature of the site, and not because of the issues around Level Six or, or odor control. Because I think you might have nailed it. I'm not sure. I'm not an expert at that, but it seems like you may have. But in terms of kind of the urban planning point, where you're trying to activate or keep activated what's turned into a small commercial, a small retail building, it, I don't know what percentage this is of the whole building, maybe 20% or 25% of the building, you're going to kill that portion of the building as an opportunity to further activate that building, and therefore I would oppose it.
Ms. Song?
I, I applaud the efforts that you have put together. I, we, we, it's not your first time that you've been in front of this commission. And by having your mechanical engineer background, I think you heard our previous comments, and you were able to implement them. I agree with Michael, but I think the application is thorough, and I think that the storefront renovations ideas should go in front of AAC as their opinion. But other than that, I, I would support this project.
It's a very small retail space on a very busy street. The building, I'm sorry, excuse me, commercial building. What, industrial building that has commercial aspects. And it's, the space that they're discussing is very, very small. It's in the elbow or the, middle of the L. And I've, I drove by the other day, and I parked in the facility, and it, especially with the artwork, it won't be detrimental to the overall feeling of that, of that building. And I really do think that they went out of their way, knowing the kinds of questions we would have and the concerns that the community has, to put together a project that is about as good as I can imagine a retrofit could be, and our odor consultant apparently agrees. So I would support the project. I don't know if I agree with the AAC having to review this, though. I think he's been through the mill on this one, and it's a very small space.
I, I won't back down on that, both on the lighting fixture, or lighting design, site design, and storefront. I, I think we, we do need that committee to review it.
So Flynn, what would be the process if it went back to AAC, and how long would that take?
Unfortunately, our January 6th agenda is already full, so the soonest we could do it is at the second meeting in January. What we might offer as an alternative, rather than sending it to the full AAC, is to send it to an AAC Subcommittee. That way, we could get the applicant through the process sooner, but at least has the input of our AAC members.
I accept that amendment.
And would, if we approve that with this condition, would they still be able to immediately start working on the interior while they're waiting for the...
Absolutely. Because the AAC will only be reviewing the exterior of the project, they could do interior work ahead of AAC approval.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Would somebody call a motion? Make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept, to approve this project with the conditions of a Subcommittee of AAC to review the storefront and the site lighting design.
I'll second the motion.
And, just, Mr. Chair, there was also a comment made earlier by Commissioner Donenfeld relative to planning condition four and five, and referencing the specifications of the odor control system.
Yes, that's part of, is that okay with the motion maker?
Yes, I, I'll accept that.
So I will second the motion with that addition, additional condition.
Any further discussion? All right. We'll go ahead and vote, please. Do you vote?
We can't vote. Aren't you calling the rule?
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbain?
No.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
And Mr. Maruzzi?
Yes. Congratulations. All right. Let's move on to our second public hearing. AT&amp;T Mobility for Conditional Use Permit and Variance to Construct and Operate a Wireless Telecommunication Facility Consisting of a 100-foot-Tall Monopole and Related Equipment on a Portion of a 40-Acre Site. Staff report, please.
Chair Maruzzi and Planning Commissioners, this application before you is a request for a Conditional Use Permit to construct and operate a wireless communication facility. In our code, Section 94.02, the Conditional Use Permit Section, such facilities can be permitted by Conditional Use Permit when approved by Planning Commission and Council. So they are requesting 100-foot-high monopole with antennas at the top of the structure, and proposing equipment related to that structure at the ground, as ground-mounted installation as well. They are also requesting a variance application to exceed the structure height permitted within the M2 zone. The permitted height is 65 feet, and as I mentioned, 100 feet is proposed. So the site is a 40-acre property, and of course, this facility will only occupy a small portion of that at the southwest corner of the site. The site is located on 19th Avenue, the north side of 19th Avenue, where Rupert Street terminates into 19th Avenue. And as I said, the facility will be at the southwest corner of the property. I've highlighted in red on the screen here where that is located. It'll be roughly 75 feet off of the property line and 25 feet back from the existing fence, where the facility's lease area will start. They will have access from the existing entry into the site, located off of, where it would be Rupert Street. And so that's how they would service the facility for regular maintenance. The lease area is about 800 square feet, and that consists of the walled or fenced area as well. And within that area, they have proposed the monopole structure, a generator, and other This is an elevation of the facility, as, as I stated, it is a 100-foot-tall structure. And you see at the bottom, at the base of it, there is the equipment proposed for the facility that would be surrounded by, they're proposing a chain-link fence with some landscape around it. Again, another elevation on the south and west views of the structure and related equipment. So the applicant has provided visual simulations, which you see here on the screen of the proposed facility. On the top left, you see an overall aerial view, standing, it's to the east of the proposed facility, looking towards the west. You can see existing condition at the bottom left on the screen, and then a larger picture of showing what the facility would look like in the current conditions. You can see on the photo here in View 1, there is an existing peaker plant just directly west of the facility. And the site, you can see another view of it here, standing on 19th Avenue, looking towards the northwest. And the site also has existing windmills located within the property, and so they're actually northeast of this facility, and you see them here in this visual simulation. So staff has prepared findings in support of these applications, both for the Conditional Use Permit, as well as the variance application, noting that the project complies with the necessary findings and criteria for approval. There are recommended conditions in your resolution for this project. We recommend that the project have, that the, the fence, the fence surrounding the lease area be changed to a block wall material. And you'll see that at the diocese today, you received a letter from the property owner opposing that condition, so that is something that you'll want to consider as a part of your review of this project. And then I'll also note that there was an error on planning condition PLN number eight. That condition states that the height of the structure is limited to 48 feet, but that is not the case. In this project, it is 100 feet, based on the proposed project. So that would be a correction to planning condition number PLN number eight. And so that concludes my presentation. This is a public hearing, and the project, we did provide notice to property owners within 500 feet of the site, as well as publish it within the desert sun. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Mr. Hirschbain?
What's the rationale for requesting the block wall?
There's this, in the development standards of the M2 zone, there's a requirement that all walls shall be constructed of solid masonry materials. So for that, for that reason, we recommend that this be a wall as opposed to a chain-link fence.
So, so are development standards prohibit chain-link fences in all M2 zones?
It's not that they're necessarily prohibited, but that is what is the suggested design of structures.
Okay. But other than that, is there a specific rationale at this site, having to do with the site itself? Or is it just compliance with the development standards?
No, it's compliance with the development standards, and there is, in the adjacent area, there is other walls. For instance, the peaker plant has a wall around it, so...
Has no chain-link, the peaker plant has no chain-link fencing?
I think they might have some, but I think towards the street-facing view, it has some block walls.
Other questions for staff? Ms. Song?
Hi, David. So the plan shows a circumference of, of shrubs, proposed shrubs. And it asks for, it says reference to landscape plan. And did I miss the landscape plan?
It's the last sheet before the photo simulation, so it's Sheet L1. It's a Texas Ranger, five gallon.
Five gallon Texas Ranger. That's all, right? There's no other...
Correct.
...planting material, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Donenfeld?
With respect to, I can't remember, because this is the first time we've had one of these transmission facilities before us. Have we required where it was a monopole situation, or in other situations, that the equipment on the ground be surrounded by a brick wall as opposed to a more industrial-like fence? Has that typically been our requirement?
There has been applications that was a revision to a project, yes.
Do you know, the, the applicant's representative talks about security issues, which sound like, you know, walls that you can't see through do invite people to do things behind them. And this is not particularly in an area where people visit. I mean, it's very remote. I'd love to see all of our monopoles right there, but we can't do that, obviously. But have you given any thought, or have you talked to police department about how they would feel about a fence versus a wall?
The police department would probably recommend that it would be a transparent structure, so that they could see through it.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I would normally think about the aesthetics, and I'm sure that's what you're thinking about, but out there, there's nothing, aesthetics don't really apply anywhere. It's, it's totally industrial and very, very unpopulated.
Yeah.
So I, I would think perhaps we would go with what the applicant wants, with, with something that you could see through. I think, it's funny, as deserted as that area looks, I, I have a feeling that a lot of things go on under those windmills. And I think it's a very dangerous area. So it might be better for security purposes that we allow the fence.
Applicant, can I ask you this? But the, the simulation, View 3, shows, I don't know what road that is, but it shows fencing, and it looks like concertina wire on top. Is that existing, or is that part of the simulation?
There is an existing fence along the front of the property.
With concertina wire?
I think it is, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question for staff. The applicant, in their letter, believes that landscaping is unrealistic, and they say, "Conventional commercial site landscaping does not survive the harsh winds and weather conditions that define this location. There's no irrigation available and no windshields to hope the landscaping survives artificially." That's a windy, windy area, hence the windmill. I, I just don't understand why we would require them to put in landscaping, which would invariably blow away or die. Yes. Flynn?
We agree that there are difficulties in establishing landscaping in that area. Only in rare situations, as you'll see with the fast-food restaurants around the freeway interchange, has there been any success with maintaining landscaping. Other facilities in the area, again, it's, it poses some challenges, especially when you're further away on the plain, more or less, that you're more susceptible to the wind. While we would typically require landscaping, if this facility were located closer into town, there might be some merit to considering not requiring the landscaping for this particular facility, based on its individual site conditions.
Any other questions for staff? All right. I'd like to hear from the applicant. Is the applicant here? Please come forward. You have 10 minutes to present, and 2 minutes for rebuttal, if there is need for that.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Dohini. I am employed with SmartLink, and we are the applicant working on behalf of AT&amp;T Wireless. And I just want to kind of just follow up on what's already been discussed, and with regards to the landscaping request and the CMU enclosure. As far as the landscaping, we did submit a landscape plans that, as part of our, our package that we submitted as part of the CUP review, because it's part, it's required as part of the, part of the package. But since then, we've heard input that the environmental conditions in the area, the high winds, make it difficult for, you know, the vegetation that is provided will not survive. So that, you know, we'll just follow the input of the council and the commission on that. And then also with regards to the CMU enclosure, again, it, our preference would be to go with the chain-link fence for the security reasons, and also, not only, it has occurred in the past where people will access those areas to get, get a hold of copper or other materials that they value, or homeless sometimes will take advantage of the shelter within the CMU enclosure, because it provides some kind of a, you know, secure area for them to, to settle. So that's also an issue. Our preference would be to go with the chain-link fence. It's visible from the road, so that would, you know, that would be my only input at this point.
All right. Thank you. Now we should open up this to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I guess you don't need a rebuttal. And we could have some questions of the applicant. Ms. Song? Ms. Song.
I hear your issues about the chain link fence. Is there any way that you could have at least one or two block as a curb and then start the chain link fence? Because the look over there is that, you know, when there's like paper or plastic bags with chain link fence, it gets caught and then it just becomes a dirty look. And so if we had at least some sort of curb and then the chain link fence, then you can have the stability of a, sort of like a exposed footing and then be able to see through still. And, you know, within 12 inches, I don't think anybody could hide in that curb. Just one other thought to make it look more stable than just a chain link fence.
Another option would be other than a chain link fence would be to use a wrought iron fence, which would be more stable.
Yeah.
Again, it wouldn't prevent the plastic bags buildup.
Yeah.
But we do, I think as part of the conditions, there's a maintenance requirement that, you know, visibility or aesthetics become an issue that they're required to maintain that and keep it relatively, you know, clean area.
So the 60-some feet that we have in our ordinance, is that old school now? Is it, are the towers now requiring 100 feet and that far apart from, in order to cover that zone? Is that where the technology is going?
No, 65 feet is reasonable because of the location of this facility and of the significant gap that currently AT&amp;T is trying to serve. 100 feet does, does provide a much, you know, better coverage than a 65-foot facility we're providing.
And my last question is, I'm sure you looked at the fall zone of the air mills, windmill, sorry, and it doesn't fall into that cup, fall zone?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, all righty. It looks like we could entertain a motion.
I made a motion.
Oh, did you?
I pressed that button.
I didn't see that. Did someone second yet?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right.
Did we resolve how we want to, did you like?
I think the applicant is proposing a tubular metal fence, not wrought iron because that's old school, but, and I think that's a good in between.
My, my motion is going to be to omit the landscaping and to, and to do a chain link fence. There's just miles of chain link fence out there. I don't know what a tubular fence, I mean, then you got to get into like what color is it? How big are the pickets? How far apart are they? Does it go to AAC? I don't want to do that. My motion is going to be chain link and no landscaping and approve.
And it doesn't sound like you want to entertain anything.
That's going to be my motion. If you want to make a different motion.
Mr. Donovan, did you second the existing?
I did second Mr. Hirschbein's motion.
All right. Well, if there's no more discussion, then let's call the vote.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
No.
And Vice Chair Moosey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All righty. Third public hearing. Let's see. Oh, wait a second here. It looks like, Flynn, would you like to?
Yes, please. Mr. Vice Chair, if you would, we would like to continue the orchery item to the meeting of January 22nd. We expect that at that date, we will have the new site plan for the orchid tree to be considered and so we'll look at those applications together. So if I could have a motion and a vote by the planning commission to continue the item to a date certain.
Can I ask a question about it?
Please.
Well, did counsel, has counsel taken any recent action on that?
Yes, they did. In looking at the extension of the entitlements, they have put a timeframe in place for the applicant to perform, including milestones. One of those is approval of a new site plan and by having that come forward to you all in January, they will meet that milestone.
So we're not going, we're not being asked to vote on the time extension, we're just being asked to approve a site plan or will be asked.
Yes, potentially that will be the action on the 22nd.
Okay, thanks.
Someone like to make a motion? All righty. And second?
Motion to comply with staff's request.
And it's seconded by Commissioner Song.
I second that. Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Moosey?
Yes.
Motion to continue passes.
All right, we're closing our public hearing. Moving on to new, oh, unfinished business, actually. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yes, we do, Chair. Thank you. So this is an application by Core Palm Springs doing, doing business as living out for a minor amendment to an approved final development district to increase a unit count from 95 to 105 units with no changes to the approved site plan. So the planning commission reviewed this, I'm sorry, approved this project on November 13th of this year, 2019, for the final development plan, which means that they need to submit building permits and within six months from that date. And they are well underway of complying with that regulation. So in the meantime, they have, as you heard the applicant speak earlier, is looking to reconfigure the interior of the site to include an additional 10 units, which will change some of the unit counts. And I'll go over that here in just a minute. So what they're requesting is to go from 95 to 105. So the approved PD, the final PD, had 61 one bedrooms and 34 two bedrooms. The amendment will make, will increase the one bedrooms to 69 and the two bedrooms to 36. In terms of how that affects parking, the approved PD had one bedroom units at 77 spaces, the two at 51, guests at 24, and a total of 152 units, I'm sorry, spaces. The amendment increases the number of parking spaces to 168 and within the reconfiguration of the site plan under, under the building, reworking some of the, the double loaded spaces, they can meet this requirement. This does not change, as you know, there's a retail component to the, the development plan and that will remain the same and they meet the requirement for the retail portion of the project. So this is on the slide, a site plan showing what the planning commission had approved last month. As you, as I mentioned, most of the changes are internal and will not change the intent of the site plan and it meets the zoning code requirement of how you can amend a PD. So section 940300G states that a modification of a planned development district may be modified by submitting a request and the planning commission can approve that minor modification. And in the staff report, there's a series of requirements that this staff has determined that the applicant has met. So in your staff report, there is floor plans that show the new reconfigured, how the units will be worked out on the first, second, and third floor. It also shows the parking underneath the building, has some roof plans, and then a reconfiguration of the first floor area where the common areas where you enter the building on the second floor where activities such as game rooms, salons, and other office spaces, and then obviously in the third floor, the fitness center and theater. So the applicant did submit two letters justifying the request and there is a brief explanation as to why they're requesting this. And once again, the applicant made his comments earlier in the meeting. So to conclude, the staff is recommending approval of the minor amendment to the PD to increase the unit count to 95, I'm sorry, from 95 to 105. There is no requirement that notice be given because it is a minor amendment, does not need to go to the city council for approval. It just comes before the planning commission. There is a resolution for your consideration and then I included the resolution that was approved by the planning commission back in November for your review. So that concludes my report and as you know, the applicant is here if you so choose to have them come up and discuss the project again. Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair.
Questions for staff? Mr. Hirschbein.
Applicant, but is the sheet that shows the enlarged core areas of the building, is it mislabeled because it says second floor, second floor?
Yes, that's, the, the very far one to the right should say third floor.
Should miss, okay, third floor. And maybe this is for applicant also, but he mentioned in the public comments that some of the public areas, common areas would be reduced. Do you know what those are? Do we have a comparison?
I would have to defer to the applicant if you so choose to bring him up.
Other questions of staff? Would you like to hear from the applicant, Mr. Hirschbein? Would you please come up?
So as it relates to the, what we changed in the common areas, we did get rid of the yoga room and then this is Jerry Sherman.
So that's on the first floor?
No, yoga, yoga was on the third.
So, so what, what did you, let's start before.
What you see here is what's been approved already. This is the revised, this is the revision.
I'm sorry, say that again?
What you're being shown is the revision.
Correct. So on the first floor, were there any changes to the size of the dining area or lounge?
Yeah, the.
The dining room was reduced.
By how much? 300 square feet?
The, the dining room was not, we determined that it was not feasible at the size that we had originally planned.
Okay. And then what changed on the second floor?
Second floor, we got rid of a couple of offices, two or three offices that we had up there. They were going to be for, for operation functions and.
But no common area?
No.
Okay. And on the third floor?
Third floor was the.
We had a deck.
An outdoor deck.
A deck which we enclosed.
If you look on the, which is the third floor, which is the far right diagram.
Yeah.
If you look in the lower left, that unit that's there, that used to be an outdoor deck.
Next to the fitness center?
No, next to the theater.
Next to the theater, okay.
Yeah, that used to be an outdoor deck in there.
Okay. Was it big?
Yeah, it was quite large, yeah.
Well, that's sad, but okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Mr. Donovan?
How is the, how are the changes affecting the square feet of the units?
The units are smaller. As I said, they're 1,200 for a one bedroom, 1,300 for a one bedroom.
And what were they before for the one?
They were closer to 14.
We had a den. We had a one bedroom in a den and we reconfigured to make them, we wanted to give the same feeling of size, so we made them kind of shotgun, but very open, whereas the other, the first units were kind of like labyrinth and so they didn't have that feeling of, of size.
And the second bedrooms have been reduced?
Second bedrooms are between 15, 50, 1550 and 1,600.
And how much reduction in those?
Those actually weren't.
They weren't reduced?
Not much, just a few square feet, but not much. The width of the units actually on the one bedrooms got a little narrower and that's how we were able to get more units.
And with respect to externals, nothing's changed?
No.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Ms. Song?
So in the articulation of where the two wings meet and then you have these common areas, before you had a outdoor terrace on the third floor and so it, it didn't give like articulation on the building massing and then now it's enclosed or, yeah, could you explain how did that not change the aesthetics of the?
Yeah, the, the deck was actually on the west side of the building. It wasn't facing the street.
Okay.
And I believe most people actually never even noticed that it was there, but so all we did is we, we mimic the same facade as the units and put that, the new units in there too.
No, I meant more on that, on, on the corner, at the intersection of the two wings.
That didn't change. The deck was outside of that.
Okay. Okay, I understand.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Coming up, let's open this for discussion. Mr. Song?
I, I believe the, the changes are not drastic to what the application was originally proposed, so I, I believe that I'm ready to make a motion to accept what is being submitted here.
Mr. Donovan?
I would support the, the changes. I agree with Commissioner Song. They're, they're relatively minor and that's what an amendment to an approved PD is all about.
Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the application and the amendment submitted.
Someone second, please? I guess the button's not working, but yes, seconded by Mr. Donovan.
Did you second?
It didn't, if you're.
I'll, I'll second.
Let's call the vote.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Moosey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Well, it's come to our attention that the item 1B on the consent calendar, I want to just make sure I understand this. When I asked for public comment at the beginning on non, let's see, public hearing items, was it clear that I was including 1B before it was pulled by Mr. Hirschbein?
I don't know if you announced it, but it is listed in our agenda that members of the public would like to comment on items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 3A, 4A, and 5A are directed to comment under the public comment portion of the agenda. So it is in the agenda itself.
So when Mr. Hirschbein, when we pulled this and we spoke about it later, it was not necessary to reopen the ability for comments from the public?
No, it would have been done at the very beginning of the meeting.
Right, so unfortunately you missed that opportunity, sir. Unless he, well, the pleasure of the commission to hear him speak and I don't think we're reopening the item.
No.
Okay, would, would she like to still speak? Come forward.
I'll take one minute, I promise.
All righty.
And I apologize if I misunderstood, because I was sitting here and I thought that it was taken out and then I didn't hear.
That's understandable.
I apologize. My name is Robert O'Connell. I'm a tenant and owner in Palm Springs Country Club, which actually, if you look at that picture, you can see the development really clearly. It's kind of great. I just had a couple of things to mention. Just two were quick observations. After reading all of the notes, it mentions in ordinance 1931, page six, there's a breakdown that it, it only adds up to 366 units. That was just a question I have for you, like a, for further information. Then it breaks down to 92 plus 214 plus 60 and that equals 366, not 386. So I was just curious how many units there will be in the future. And then I guess I would just respectfully ask the developers, the current occupants that are there are what's called Palm Springs Country Club. And the paperwork kind of talks about how the area is deserted and a blight and this new development is going to be great and they refer to it as kind of just as blighted area. We've been a little bit of like a, an island surrounded by a moat that once was a country club and is now vacant land, but the moat is still there. And it's my understanding that originally, because it is a William Cody development, I believe it was one of his last projects here in Palm Springs before he passed away. It's my understanding that it was originally agreed to have a wall built completely to surround the new development, which would protect everyone, the, the new residents of the new development as well as the existing residents of the Palm Springs Country Club or the Whitewater Country Club condos. If they're allowed to construct only in a partial wall as phases are being built, it essentially eliminates that protection and the security of the existing gated community. Because you, if you look on the kind of far north and far west of that picture where the original country club gates were, if you open that up and then you open it up on the other side, the middle part is no longer gated community and you've got a partial wall as the visitor being built, but it's not a comprehensive, secure environment anymore. So I just want to do, on record, I'd like to hear more about that from the developers when this does come up and as well as clarification about whether it's 386 or.
Is the staff prepared to respond?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind. If you leave your contact information with Ms. Hints here. If you leave your contact information with Ms. Hints here, we'll have our staff planner who worked on the project get in touch with you, and he can talk to you about the approved plans in terms of the wall that has been approved. I'll just reassure you that there's no intent to make gated communities unsecure in terms of the wall that's around the gated community. But again, if you leave your contact information, I'll have one of our planners get in touch with you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your time and.
Thank you.
Consideration, I appreciate it.
Now, so we're moving on to new business. Item 4A, William Dumka on behalf of Michael King requesting a major architectural application for the construction of a 7,125 square foot storage facility located at 3520 North Anza Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to present to you Ms. Alex Perez, who is one of our new planners. You may have run into her at our holiday party over the weekend, but since this is, this is the first case that she's presenting to you, I just wanted to introduce you to her. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Perez.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. The applicant, William Dumka, on behalf of the property owner, Michael King, has submitted a major architectural application for a 7,125 square foot industrial building located at 3520 North Anza Road. This parcel is located in the M1 service manufacturing zone. The proposed building is situated towards the rear of the property and will include a new landscape parking area with nine parking spaces and a new trash enclosure. The primary purpose of this building is to store classic vintage vehicles. As noted on the plan, there are no interior walls on, and the floor plan is open concept, save for the restroom in the rear. The building will be constructed with conventional steel framing and painted insulated metal panels with a simulated stucco finish. The, a large glazed window, gray metal roll-up door, and a yellow metal entry door with a metal overhang are located on the front elevation and will be visible from the public right of way. Air conditioning equipment will be placed at grade and will be concealed behind the proposed building. Roof parapets will hide any venting and piping, and no roof mounted mechanical equipment is proposed. This would be the front and the rear elevations, and the north and south, which would be enclosed behind, or I guess not visible from the public right of way. This is a perspective of the proposed front elevation. Modular pavers will pave the parking lot, and a four-foot-high concrete masonry block wall will be located on portions of the north, south, and west elevations on the property lines. That's not shown in this perspective. The project will include new landscaping throughout the parking lot. The proposed materials are appropriate for the surrounding area and offer to shade approximately 36% of the parking lot. The Palm Springs zoning code requires at least 30% of the parking lot be shaded. This project complies with that standard. This is an existing photograph of the site. As you can see, right now, it's being used as an permitted parking area. These are the buildings on the north and the south, the, of, of the proposed project The proposed project is consistent with the development standards in the M1 zone and has a similar, and is similar in design and use as the surrounding buildings in that Staff recommends the planning commission approve the project based on the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is available to answer any questions.
Questions, questions for staff? Mr. Donenfeld?
I have a very non-substantive question. At the end of the staff report, there looks like there's a vote taken by former commissioners. What does that have to do with the staff report?
We discovered that a little bit late in terms of a typo.
Oh, okay.
So that information does not belong there.
I kept looking at it thinking, gee, that was back in the day when J.R. Roberts was still on the commission, too. Thank you.
Ms. Song?
Welcome. Thank you. Okay, so if you look at the site plan, and if you're looking at the southern property line, there's a, there's a proposed new wall, new site wall, and then there's nothing else for 60% of that property line. Is that because there's a building there?
I think originally, the prop, the proposed building was supposed to go to the property line because there is no side yard or side setback in that area. It was conditioned by, I believe, the building and fire department to create a concrete walkway to allow another exit point from the rear to the front.
Right.
So I'm...
So is there, is the new site wall continuing for the entire property line?
Right, I think maybe the applicant should answer that question, if, if, if a wall will be continued, or if it's just proposed to stop there.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff? All right, do we want to hear from the applicant? All right, is the applicant here? Yes, please come forward.
Hello. My name's William Dumka. I work for McGee Sharon Architects on behalf of Michael King. In reference to the, the original question about the site walls, it is true, originally we did design the building with the intent of infilling all the way to the property line, but as part of the fire department's recommendations, they were, they were looking for access all the way to the back door, so we basically created that walkway all the way to the back. The property walls, the intent of the property wall is just to provide some sort of context and give some privacy to the building itself, not so much as a feature of protecting the building or the property, that it's not for security or anything else.
Ms. Song?
So for that, for 95 feet, somebody could just go to the property on the other side, and, and that's okay with you?
Yes, there's no gate on the front entry as well, so...
Right, 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 but, so the wall stops, and then what's on the other side? Is it just gravel?
Are you talking to the east of the?
South?
To the, to the south, there's a little bit of gravel. It's basically right up, it's right up against, you see their.
Oh, I see.
Tanned, their, their wall there.
Okay, so that wall that steps down, that's in the front yard, call it?
Sure.
You're going to build another wall right next to it?
Yes. And it's, the reason for that is to, to create a new, a new environment for the building itself, and also to provide backing to the trash enclosure, which will be up against that wall.
So what, what would be the space between that existing low wall and your proposed site wall?
It would be a vacant area.
I know, but what's that distance?
The distance would be the remainder length of the building, which is, let me see here, which is roughly 95 feet to the back, to the back property line.
I'm sorry, the width, I meant the width.
Oh, the width?
Yeah.
It looks to scale about two, maybe a foot and a half to two feet from the property line to their building.
Wall or to the building?
To the building, to, from, from our property line to their building, it's about a two-foot gap.
Okay, just one more time, sorry. That stepped low block wall.
Uh huh.
Okay, does that line up with the parapet wall of the existing building, neighboring building?
No, I believe it's offset. It's actually on their property line.
Which is also the shared property line.
The shared property line, exactly.
So if you build your wall, and right now the plan shows it on the property line.
Correct.
You're essentially building a composite wall.
You could say that, yes. We're building, but we're building it to our preferred height.
Okay, and, and that's your proposed design that you build, so the footing will be an offset footing, and it will just be gap by a couple of inches?
Yeah, for getting a toe hold in there. So it would be like a two inch probably is what they need for a gap.
And may I ask, why wasn't, why is not this wall sort of in, in harmony with your wall design?
Oh, their, their wall in particular? I, I think it's just for a private, private owner issue, so that we have control over our block walls and the, and the layout and design of it, as opposed to sharing that wall with the own, next door neighbor.
Okay, hmm, okay.
Also, I should, should mention that the wall, the wall is, the intent was to have it continue around the front, and there was an idea for putting a gate, a rolling gate in the front, so it would basically come out and hold the, the front on the west side of the building, property line, from the street.
You're not proposing that right now. There's no gates.
No gate.
Yeah, but there's a wall.
Correct. And the wall's the same height on the other side of the driveway as well, entry.
Yeah, so during engineering's review of the site plan, until you pointed it out just now, I did not pick up on the fact that there was that adjacent wall, and so the city engineer's policy on walls adjacent to each other is, we typically don't allow those, because it ends up being a maintenance issue or a property issue with this gap between walls, and how do you maintain it? How do you keep trash out of it? How do you do something with it? So we, we try to discourage that from happening, and I, I, I will admit, I did, I did not pick up on that at the time that we were reviewing this. So it's not something that we would be inclined to, to be in agreement with, you know?
So, Mr. Vice Chair, what I might suggest is that engineering will have a condition of approval related to the design of the wall, so that we address that issue of a potential gap between the two walls.
Mr. Hirschbein, do you have a question of the applicant? I see your hand.
City engineer, I see your issue, and I'm proposing a solution, because I do see the, it's going to be weird if he has this wall parallel with the street at a certain height, and then it turns and it's low. That just seems quite bizarre to me, and not at all attractive. So perhaps you could build your wall in the proposed location adjacent to the existing wall, and create some sort of sheet metal cap, like a flashing detail almost, between the two walls, to eliminate the possibility that trash or other debris could accumulate in that crack. Is that, would that be acceptable?
We have seen that in the past, as long as that gap isn't too far.
Well, he's only saying an inch and a half.
Yeah.
So I'm saying a little sheet metal Z clip or something that fits in that gap. That's technical, I'm sorry. That would fit in that gap, that would prohibit whatever you're concerned about from.
Sure.
Descending into that crack.
He could, he could send us a detail on that, we'll work with him on it.
Would that be acceptable?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions of both staff or the applicant? Oh, Ms. Song?
I, I do have a comment. I, I think that that is a solution viable. I think that you need to talk to your neighbor and see what is possible to work with their wall, because once they touch their material, then it becomes a different liability issue. But in, in urban settings, your solution is perfect, but this is not an urban setting. In my perspective, it would be work with the wall, you know, work with their wall and your wall, and I'm sure you can come up with a nice transitional design.
It, it might work that you can go to the, that wall's on the property line right now? Does it straddle the property line? I'd, I'd like to verify it, but... Okay, so, so just assume it does for a minute. Why don't you go to the landlord, the owner, and say, "I want to build a new wall. Can I tear this one down?"
Perfect. Perfect. But that's the task.
So the task of the engineer with the, who's tasked?
What we will do is staff will work with the applicant to resolve the issues with the wall on the southern boundary, which may either include a cap or the elimination of the existing wall in favor of the construction of a new wall. But again, staff will be tasked with working with the applicant in, in accomplishing that.
My whole thing is that that area is one of the few areas now that is, there's infill available in Palm Springs. It's incredible how much we're building. So as the new projects come in, let's, let's make sure that is clean and thoughtful, and, and even though it is an industrial area, it is still improved in a caring manner. So that's my two cents, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Any other discussion? Thank you very much, sir.
Sure.
Any other discussion? All right, then I would entertain a motion, please.
I'm making a motion to accept the application with the condition of having staff work out the perimeter wall adjacency issues with the neighboring existing wall.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Hirschbein. Any other discussion? Let's call the vote.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Oh, I'm sorry, was there a comment?
No.
Oh, let's call the question.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Maruzzi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations to you. All right, where are we now? Planning Commission, oh no, Discussion of General Plan Update and Proposed Steering Committee. I think Flynn will probably have some commentary on item 5A, General Plan Update.
Actually, our project manager, Mr. David Newell, will be giving that update for you.
Very good.
Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners, as discussed at your October 23 meeting of this year, we are in the process of doing a limited general plan update, and we just wanted to provide you a progress report on that today, just to give you kind of an update and to see where we're at. Right now, we're in the data collection phase, and we've been providing the consultant placeworks with all of the data necessary, including spatial data, GIS data, backup reports, and other ordinances relevant for updating the city's general plan. The schedule is still on track. We do anticipate it to take approximately 18 months, and we are in the process of forming the General Plan Steering Committee. So in terms of the schedule, we anticipate holding regular monthly meetings with the Steering Committee from January to July of next year, and we will also hold three community workshops in, right now, tentatively scheduled for January, May, and, January, May of next year, and March of 2021. We included a copy of our, our revised schedule in your, attached to your memorandum that you received as a part of this packet item, and we also have tentatively scheduled the first kickoff meeting with our Steering Committee, January 13th, and that's tentative at this point until we actually finalize all of the members of that committee. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Would it be appropriate for, there's only going to be one planning commissioner assigned to this steering committee, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Would it be appropriate, now that we have some experienced commissioners here, to ask if anyone wants to be on it, or should we wait until?
I'd like to wait until our next meeting. One of the things I would like to do is to make sure that we have a full planning commission before we decide to appoint a member of the planning commission to the steering committee, just to see who we have, because again, I have no idea who they're going to appoint at this point in time.
Will we be, will we have a full commission? I know they're interviewing soon, but will, will it be in time for council approval?
They are scheduled to do the interviews on January the 7th. Our next planning commission meeting is on January the 8th. I don't think they're going to be able to make the appointments, but they will probably select them on the 7th, so...
We won't have, well, there'll be four of us on January 8th.
Yeah, we will probably only have the four of you on January the 8th, but we may know who the new planning commissioners are at that point.
But can we, can, until they've been approved by council, they're not really seated, so can we, we can't jump the gun by selecting someone in advance of them actually being seated.
It, it depends on what action they take on the 7th of January.
What you mean, they'll meet, they may meet in a public council meeting and approve, make the approvals at the...
They might, yes.
They've done that in the past, I think.
Yeah, they might do that.
Explain that to me again, because they meet on Thursday.
Yes, what they typically do is... Yes, what they typically do is they do the interviews, and at the conclusion of the interviews, they select the appointees, but they don't formally appoint them until the city council meeting, the following city council meeting. But by the end of the meeting on the 7th, we may know who the appointees are.
We've got, I think we understand that, but
Yeah.
We still can't go forward on the 7th and make that appointment, because they won't have officially been seated.
That's true, but again, we will assume that they will accept the appointment, that...
I don't think we can do that, because we don't know, I mean, there may, obviously you're right, it's pretty perfunctory after that, but anything can happen. But I have seen them do, actually meet as a, in a special council meeting the very day that they interview the applicants, and I think that, Jim, that can be done, and then they go ahead and take a vote.
Yeah.
And then they're seated.
That could be the case, and again, they haven't revealed how they're going to do that.
I mean, because of this tremendous need here, this is an extraordinary situation we're facing, they should do that.
I would hope that they would.
Would you, would you pass on our recommendation, Joe?
Certainly.
It doesn't have to be agendized and given enough public notice for this sort of thing?
Yeah, they can do that.
So it would be put in advance, it would be agendized.
If they decide to do a public interview and appointment process right then there, it'll be agendized as such.
But, but back to David, if their first meeting that they're scheduling for January 13th, if it could be moved to the second meeting, I mean, towards the end of January, then we could have an official planning commission in which we could elect who that committee member would be.
But I think Mr. Donenfeld has a point, which is, we would have a full seven-member commission on, at our meeting of January 8th, if the council approved all of their appointments that same day in January 7th. If they don't, then we wait till January...
Yeah, unfortunately, and then that pushes our schedule back, which is what I'm trying to avoid at all costs.
So you see, there's sort of two things we're trying to do.
Right.
Trying to fill up the seats and get someone chosen for the...
Yeah, but it seems to me that if David is able to reschedule the meeting to later in January...
But they don't want to do that, because they don't want to get off their schedule.
Never mind.
Jim, am I being too picky here about selecting someone before council has formally approved them for the office?
I mean, it really comes down to the risk of the person saying no, or not being appointed, or something like that, you know, moving a little bit ahead of the process. If you're certain that the person would accept it, would be able to serve, would actually be appointed, I mean, you could do it. Because the important thing is, when that person is actually a committee member sitting down and actually doing the work, that they be an officially appointed member of the commission by that point. So again, it just becomes a practical issue of, are you jumping the gun a little bit because you may be selecting somebody that's not going to be officially appointed, or may not choose to do it, or something like that? It just becomes a practical issue.
Not a legal issue.
I don't believe it's a legal issue. I think as long as they are sworn in and official by the time they're actually doing work of that committee, that's fine.
Okay, well then I withdraw my concern. I listen to lawyers.
So the council here, two reasons why we want to have them do this. One is we want to complete the commission, and secondly, we'd like to be able to choose a member of the subcommittee, or the, yes. All right, very good. Any other, let's see here, I guess that completes today's agenda, so are there any reports from members of the commission? Mr. Herschbein?
So, I know that a lot of effort goes into these meetings on staff's part, not just planning staff, but the IT staff, and the, the food and beverage staff that brings us our water, a lot goes on. But unfortunately, today, there were a lot of distractions, and at times during the meeting, it was really hard for me to focus on the specific agenda that we're here for because of some of those distractions. And obviously, the IT part of it was some of it. And there was, sometimes there was more than one meeting going on during, in the room, and that was distracting too. So I would just ask that, in the future, maybe IT can sort these issues out prior to our meetings, and if there's some business that needs to take place during the meeting that's not part of the agenda, that maybe we call a timeout and do that offline. But to do it concurrent with the staff report or public testimony, it's just, it's distracting, and it's hard, hard to pay attention 100%.
I will tell you, relative to the IT issues, we encountered the same issues at city council last week, so you're not alone.
And former Mayor Moon said, "We've been dealing with this for three years."
Maybe the solution is if there is an IT issue during the meeting, we just tell them to wait, and we just do it like we did, the old-fashioned way. Because to have him crawling under my desk while there's a public, while the staff is trying to convey some important information that they've worked on, I mean, it's disrespectful to them, and it distracts us. It's just not appropriate.
Before the meeting, was able to inform me that my TOVA, oh!
Your TOVA?
My TOVA concerns are being addressed by the city.
What does that mean? Well... I can report, our office did speak with the city council on that, and we have been directed to take all appropriate action to deal with TOVA, so...
What does that mean?
Well, we are looking at possible legal action. I can't go into any specifics about it, but I mean, it's just something that, you know, is on the table, and we will do that if necessary.
I'm so pleased, obviously, they're taking it very seriously, it's the previous council, but still.
Yes, they are.
I'm very pleased, and I think, this is probably in Dennis Woods' district, I would assume.
Yeah.
So I think he'll probably be happy as well.
Was he?
Was he? I didn't see him back there. Any other reports?
Oh, I have a question for Flynn.
Yes.
Now that Dennis is now serving on the council, and at least as a former commissioner, have they made the assignment yet to the liaisons, to the commissions, based on the new configuration?
No, they haven't done that yet.
Because Dennis might want to be our new liaison.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least someone would want him to.
And Lisa might want him to.
The planning director, do you have any comments?
The only other thing I had to announce was the appointments to the planning commission. We've already discussed that as part of our general plan discussion, so I don't have anything else. Since we do have such a small planning commission at the moment, I really do appreciate your efforts to be here to review the materials. Other than the few distractions that we had during the meeting, again, I do appreciate your ability to get through the agenda, and appreciate your service, so thank you all.
Thank you, and we will adjourn to the meeting of January 8th, is that correct? 2020.
Happy holidays.